I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number two, open public forum. Anybody that is not on the agenda wishing to speak? Otherwise, we'll move on to number three, approval of the agenda. I need a motion. Gary makes a motion, I need a second. Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on the agenda? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Against? Motion carries. Number four, consent agenda, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion.
Doug makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Number five, joint resolution for designation of certain land and the immediate annexation of the entire designated area.
Yes, I'm Todd Dorr, and I'm looking to annex 2.34 acres into the city for the parking lot use for school.
I will read the recommendation. Recommendation to accept the joint resolution for designation of certain land and the immediate annexation of the entire designated area. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
How long you said, set this date?
Did he did anything else for something?
Number six, encroachment agreement with Cold Spring Brewing Company.
Hi, hello. So the brewery's looking for approval for placement of cooling system on the northeast corner of the building. Yes, is that better?
I think so, yep.
Okay. I'll read the recommendation, any discussion on it? Recommendation to approve the encroachment agreement with Cold Spring Brewing Company for placement of the cooling system within a utility basement. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Jamie makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Is there any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. There you go. Thanks. Public Works Director Report, Don Steady, along with, I mentioned.
Can you bring your board up? I can sit up for about time. Busy enough, busy enough.
Yeah, looks like you're busy today.
I think the first one on the agenda is the summer help. It's kind of nice, we have all four of the same part timers. Kids from high school that are coming back. Super convenient for us, we don't have to train them very much, they just kind of do their thing, so. Looking for approval by those four at the 986 program.
Recommendation to approve hiring Blake Vogt, Matt Kuschel, and Noah Zabranski, and Nathan Dingman as part-time employees of the parks department at a rate of 986 per hour. I need a motion on that. Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. Seems like a lot, but a lot of times they're not out at the same time, so it works out really good, especially a couple of them are in sports and stuff, so. Mix up some days. And then also, last year, we were looking for kind of a year-round full-time help, which fills in basically in the spring and fall, when the kids are gone as well. We talked to Dave Roche from Richmond, and he's willing to take on the role, so we're looking for approval to hire him as well.
Recommendation to approve the hiring of Dave Roche as part-time streets and park employee at a rate of 1661 per hour. I need a motion. Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Go ahead, Doug.
How many hours is he going to be working every week?
Oh, no. He's gonna, it's gonna be a flexible schedule with him, he's got things going on as well. A lot of it's gonna be fill-in stuff, and then no more than ever than 32 hours a week. But I find it hard to believe if you're on a labor country that's 32 hours a week, but mainly fill-in. Spring and fall would be a busier deal with all the kids gone, but. We'll take advantage of a lot of the, we'll use the kids as much as we can, so they get hours in the summertime when they're not going to school. Okay, just be kind of a fill-in. Sounds good.
Any other discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
The next thing is the refurbished breaker for the Onset Generator Wastewater Plant. Just a little history of it. When, a couple of times last year, we had a power outage, something was wrong in the panel, and it took a couple different electrical outfits to figure this out, but. It was something with this breaker that was actually backfeeding the system, so. We were sending power from our generator back out into their system, which is a big normal. So, they finally got to the bottom of it, and as you can see, the brand-new one was quite expensive, it was over $16,000 for a new one, but. We did get a price for refurbished breaker, and it was $6,635 from LNS Electric Incorporated, so. We'd like approval to go ahead and purchase that on a budget line item wastewater repair upkeep, 6313.
Recommendation to approve the purchase of an 800-amp refurbished breaker from LNS Electric Incorporated in the amount of $6,635, and furthermore, to be paid out of wastewater. The wastewater budget line item equipment repair upkeep, number 6313. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jamie makes a motion, how about a second?
Second it.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Just a little update for the next meeting. I did talk to Jeff Delius, and he's going to work at the ballpark again this year, but that probably won't be until after the school year's over. So we'll get that on the next one, and then. In the budget, we discussed radio read, radio read water meters to do half the town, half the remaining of the town this year and the other half next year. So we met with Brad Sins from DSG, and he gives a quote. I got that ready, I'll probably put it on the next agenda. We want to wait till the frost will come, so if you have problems with curb stops, we can get out of them. And access, and if there's water that needs to be shut off, which there will be, a lot of times you work the old valves in the house, and it doesn't work, so. Just, that's upcoming. Little frozen water update, we did have one or two already that have opened up on their own. So anybody who does have a frozen line, make sure you're checking it daily, as it could be open already. Also, for anybody who's running water, check your temperature, if it's over that 36, 37 degrees, you should be fine now. Go back to your normal lifestyle with water in your house. Otherwise, yeah, it's tough, we don't really know, I mean, we'll never know if it's open, so check it. I did call a couple of them yesterday, and both theirs are closed yet, but they're gonna be checking it daily, so. Little update on the pilot study, it's up and running. They did just get done with the acclimation period, which is kind of their trial run, to make sure it's up and running properly the way they want it to before we start sampling. Because once we start sampling, the Department of Health will get those results, so they want it to be up and running. As of yesterday, it was taking the nitrate from 8.9 down to a zero, so.
Oh, really, wow.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. And for whatever reason, well, five actually, which is the one the brewery pulls up. When we took that one offline and hooked it up to the brewery, it was at like a 12, and that's just how the nitrates fluctuate in town, now it's at 8.9. So it has dropped, which is kind of weird, because it's probably pumping harder than it ever was, but. I don't foresee that staying that way, it's gonna go back up. But in the meantime, we'll be adding nitrates to the pilot study to get back up to that 12, to show the Department of Health that if we are getting to a 12 or a 13 in our water, the pilot side's capable of bringing it down to zero, so. Probably the end of the week, early next week, we'll start adding nitrates to the water to get that nitrate even higher, to show the Department of Health that it can get down to zero. And then tomorrow, we're gonna start sampling, so. It's kind of a process, getting it all set up in the brewery, but thanks to the brewery for helping out. Ike over there, he was phenomenal, I mean. We used their scissor lift, and you know, he ran water lines above the ceiling, and. It was basically three days, there was two guys, two chemical engineers from Georgia that came up, and three days of setup, it was a lot of work. And for Ike to do that for us, that was, that was cool, so it's good to have that work relationship with brewery.
Yes, it is.
So, just want to thank them, and outside of that, that's it.
All right. Any questions for John? Otherwise, we'll move on to City Engineer Report, Brian Lynch and.
Mr. Mayor and Council. We had, last week, Tuesday, we had our open house for 158 First Street South. We had really good attendance, I think we had probably over 50 people here. Talked a little bit about, you know, what the proposed project would be, the county was here as well, we talked about their portion of the project. You know, we talked about full sewer and water reconstruct from Red River to 14th, based on the condition of the pipes and everything that we're dealing with. And that new roadway surface as well. So we had a lot of good questions from people, asking about their water and sewer lines, about the street, the sidewalks, everything, so a lot of good input. An overall, I think, fairly positive input as well.
I thought it was. Bridgette and I also, last Friday, had a meeting with Jody Teich, the third county engineer, we talked about how the project would be done, how we divide, who does what. What we talked about is that if we move forward, the city would do all of the design work from 14th Avenue to Red River, the county would do all the other work. And then we're still kind of trying to figure out who would actually lead the project and do the bidding, those sort of things. Combine it in one plan set though, because we wouldn't want to have one contractor.
And there'd be some cost sharing that we have to work out.
Yeah. Yes, we talked about cost sharing. The county's looking to pick up some of the roadway and then potentially some of the storm sewer as well. Which is good news. So, I guess if there's any questions about our, the open house we had, any questions about the project, I guess what we're looking for to move forward would be to authorize feasibility report. So like we've done on other projects, the feasibility report is part of the assessment process, we call it the 429 process. It's Minnesota Statute 429 that allows us to pass some of those costs on to property owners. And so the feasibility study is part of that process, we have to evaluate it. We give property owners a preliminary assessment, and then we hold an improvement hearing. When that feasibility report is done, so that they have an opportunity to come, ask the council questions, ask us questions about the project, before we actually move forward with it.
All right, well, should I read the recommendation then? Recommendation to approve Resolution 2019-07, ordering the preparation of a feasibility report for the CSAH 158 First Street South reconstruction project. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. Probably, the first step will be to get, get in touch with Dan Cron and O'Malley Cron, get the survey complete, which will put our snow doesn't stick around too long. That will repeat that. So probably next week, end of the following, we'll probably get started on some surveys. Once we have the survey, then we do preliminary design, and then work on the report, so we're probably looking midsummer for the improvement hearing. I think July, I'm thinking probably July, August, somewhere in there. It'll really depend on how quick we can get survey, you know, if we can get out there next week, that'll be great, if it's a month out, we're gonna be kind of looking this back, but. The idea would be then to hold the improvement hearing midsummer. If you decide to proceed with the project, then we would prepare plans in the late summer, early fall, and then have a bid, probably into January, into February, somewhere in there, for 2020 construction.
All right.
Water treatment plant is covered, and then Alexander Park, we're wrapping up the design, we're meeting with the credit company, and with their project manager, and the architect, and stuff later in the week as well. Nice, thanks for that.
Anything else? Any questions for Brian? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a little, quick update on the snow, we do get a lot. This time of year, it's pretty difficult to plow, it's a heavy wetting blow, at least for Main Street River. I don't foresee it tight to the curb lines, being it's only gonna take three days to melt it. Anytime your wing does pop over the curb, it scrapes the grass pretty good, so. Just let the residents know that if you don't see it tight to the curb, there's reason why. It's not gonna last long, bear with us, everybody's sick of snow, so. But it should, it should all work out, we're prepared.
All right. Thanks, good.
Thank you.
Number nine, Police Department Report, Chief Poole.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. First off, last Wednesday, we were contacted by the brewery. They have their construction going on on Fifth Avenue behind the brewery. They had a bunch of equipment all show up at the same time, and they were struggling to get the equipment off the trucks into the building. They asked us to shut the road down, we ended up closing it from mid-morning-ish until they had the signs pulled off by 2:30 before the buses went through. They're aware that they're supposed to have council approval prior to shutting down any roadways, but to get everybody or everything out of there safely before buses came out, we ended up shutting it down for about half a day. So, just in case anybody complained or seen the signs up, that's, that's why.
Okay.
Kind of recap of our squad purchase for this year. I kind of brought it up at the beginning of this year, that Ford ended up changing their design from a gas model to a hybrid model. So they shut down production at, towards the end of last year, earlier than I think what a lot of agencies were expecting. It sounds, after checking, since the first of the year till now, a lot of the agencies are still in the same boat that we are, unable to find a squad. We're hoping that we're gonna be able to get one to purchase one in auctions, but I think, with everybody looking at the same time, we struggled to do that. If they were there, they were gone before anybody had a chance to gravel. So currently, I've looked at, the county is currently leasing Tavos, looked into that. From a budget standpoint, it looks good, because it's a steady budget, but by the end of it, you end up paying about time and a half for the same vehicle as you would purchasing it outright. Which, you have a steady budget, but you end up paying a lot more in the end. We looked at buying one outright, a Tahoe currently, and GM puts a cap on how many police models they produce each year. They are currently already done producing all of the 2019s, they aren't producing anymore. So as of right now, we're kind of at a standstill on what our options are, unless we want to go with like a 2016 with 75,000 to 100 miles on it, which isn't really productive. So game plan right now is to wait until, it sounds like they come out with the 2020 vehicles for Chevy in May, and at least have a date on when we could purchase one. Or also look at the option of taking the money, I talked to Bridgette about it, taking the money that we budgeted this year, throwing it over into next year, and then purchasing two vehicles next year. The two that are, would be cycled out, one's at 107,000, one's at right around 100,000 mark, so they are getting up to 300 miles. I think they, they will both make it through the year, but by the time it comes to next year or the end of this year, they'll have to purchase something, so. Kind of wait and see what those prices will be for the 2020s, and what our options are, they're gonna bring it back to you guys at that time. Start announcing for our bike rodeo in Cold Spring, we'll be having one on May 8th, and I believe we're gonna do it behind the DEF again, in that parking lot. So if anybody has younger kids or any bikes that haven't been registered with the city, we'll also have an obstacle course set up for the kids, that'll start at 5:00 PM. And we'll also have a drawing for a three-bike, which is donated by Warner's Hardware. Then on May 22nd, at Centennial Park, we'll have one in Richmond, so if anybody can make it out to either of those two, hopefully we'll get a good turnout and the kids. And then last thing, just wanted to thank everybody that came out to community showcase, stopped at the public safety booth. I wasn't there myself, but it sounded like it was a good turnout, so just wanted to thank everybody. And that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me?
Do you have questions for Jason? Always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number 10, City Administrator Report.
It looks long. The first one is a letter from StanTech seeking waiver for any further viability on the filter design. If you remember, the Well 7 pump failed several times, we couldn't figure out what it was. And I'm not 100% sure that it was the design of the filter, but that's what the manufacturer's saying, is the filter design was different, and it had been a design that StanTech had used several times in the past, so they figured that it would work for our 7. The manufacturer had a different design pump that our filter was supposed to use, that they say will work, and so we've gone with that now. I think 7 is up and running, not running yet.
Nope, tomorrow, tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we're gonna.
Do it in the test, but it is now the filter that the manufacturer recommends, and so StanTech is going to pay for the replacement filter, and just want a waiver that now that their design meets what the manufacturer's specifications, they. They don't want to be responsible for filters waves again, and we would probably go after the manufacturer at that point, because our county knows the filter would work. And hopefully it does. But, so Brian has sent this letter, Sue and I reviewed it a little bit and changed it to make it specific to the filter and not the whole project itself. And so we just need a recommendation, or approval to have the mayor sign on.
Recommendation to, to approve the mayor signing the release letter for StanTech consulting services related to the DFP load side filter design. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
All right, the next is the, speaking of Well 7, Department of Health memorandum, every year we have agreement with them because of the nitrates monitoring agreement. The last one we signed, it was designated for pumps for Wells 4, 5, and 6, so we took 5 off line, and that's approved now, so this is just a revised agreement that now specifically deals with 4, 6, and 7.
Recommendation to approve the mayor signing the memorandum of agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health regarding water quality of the city water system. I need a motion. Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Second it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Last week, Chris and I were invited to a meeting with the auditor's office, who oversee elections for the county. In 2018, there were 12,000 early votes cast, that's either the mail-in absentee ballot or the in-person ballot. And they anticipate that 2020 will get more, close to 20,000. And so they're asking for assistance, because they don't have the manpower and the bodies to be the election judge for that many ballots. We're gonna have three elections next year, March 3rd will be presidential primary, August 11th will be the state primary, and then November 3rd will be the election. And we talked about all the various options, like being, one of the cities being a site for the whole county to come and vote. And, but nobody really has the space or their own number of election judges, 20,000 people, forget. Melrose used to do it, Melrose was a site, the Wake Park Service Center in downtown did it for the whole county, you could go in there the seven days before each election and vote in person. And then everywhere you could get a mail-in ballot, or an application for a mail-in ballot. While the cities that were there, we all thought that we could probably handle our own residents for those seven days before each election. We did contact all our current election judges, and they're all on board, that they would be available to work shifts. And so I wanted your approval, so that we can let the county know that we would take on the voting for the in-person absentee only, we won't do mail-in ballots at all. For the residents closer, so that would just be people, this is their polling place, so we'll do that.
Did you put together like an average of how much the cost increase would be for them?
We are, we are working on that, because we're also looking, we're doing a wage survey of election judges for the different cities, and we're quite a bit lower, so we're thinking about also establishing a higher pay. So we'll do that along with what it would be to increase to the dollar mountain, and how much more it's gonna be to.
Bring that addition.
To do that addition. I anticipate, it's not how much different, you know, if we go from 9:50 to 11, I don't know those numbers, but just ballparking, we've always done about $1,500, so adding those extra seven days, it's gonna be about. About, I think it'll take about $5,000 for the whole year, to do all 21 days, plus the, well, I'd be 21 days of early voting, and the three days of actual in-person election day voting. And having that here, I have a feeling we will get, especially in the Saturday before, because we have to be open the Saturday before election day from 10 to 3. A lot of the in-person absentee, we come down to Deal Zone, let's go vote. We might actually promote it, because then that makes election day a lot less stressful for all voters. So first, I want to be able to make sure you're okay with it, and then the numbers, then we clean the rate the same that you want, but I, I will be. And that will be at the voting fee. Unless you want to delay it.
Okay, recommendation to approve allowing absentee in-person voting for the 2020 election cycle at the polling site for the city of Cold Spring. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, oh, go ahead.
Is this a cost that's normally carried by the county?
Yeah, and we are talking with them about cost sharing too, like we might not, they might, if we don't have the proper equipment, they have it, so there's, there's discussion on that, so that's also one reason I brought that up. We don't know what their cost sharing would be, but they definitely were, we have resources, and if you help us, we can discuss how that cost, cost sharing can happen.
Any other, go ahead, Doug. So if the county comes back and says there's no cost sharing, and they are now taking the burden of the cost, are we obligated to still take this on?
No, I can let them know that we're interested and we want to do it, but that, that can be one of the things I say, we, we're gonna need to have assistance to do it.
Okay. So this is just allowing?
This is allowing us.
The possibility of doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't saying we're going to do it, this is saying.
It's gonna say, we're gonna enter into this agreement with them, and we're gonna find a way to make it work.
If it's gonna be feasible.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
The next one, the phone wire was, so last, so last year, two years ago, we put the ordinance in on the placement. There was FCC ruling recently that said to also require what they look like has to be done by a city by April 15th. It doesn't have to be an ordinance according to the FCC, it just has to be a policy. And so several cities had enacted some, and I got a couple samples off the LEED website, and the Rochester one was one that Brian and I thought was most, the most extensive on trying how they have, where they have to be, and so. The one you have in front of you is the policy that I would like the city to enact tonight, and then I will publish it on the city website, because it does need to be published, but it doesn't say where in that order any cities publish, so if you approve it, I'll put it on our ordinance page, and that will qualify under. page, and that will qualify other, um, recommendations to require them to make them look nice, so they'll have to be black, if they're gonna be on our polls down town, they'll have to be the same color as the polls around town. Um, they do have to have an agreement with the polls around town, because those are our cell, they're not cities, they'll have to have an agreement with us for our polls. We did put in it that we don't want any, um, additional power boxes down at the bottom that would disrupt driveways or other, um, red and white, and it's also recommended by our city attorney, so Brian and I did a little, um, revision to the language, uh, yesterday, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, and so that's what we're thinking.
All right, recommendation to approve the small wireless facility aesthetics requirements and construction criteria. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Doug makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Jamie seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Anything else? We're done with that. Okay, number 11, list of bills and additions, recommendation to review and accept payment of the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff. I need a motion.
Need a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second. Gary seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Number 12, general questions and comments from the city council. Jamie?
Nothing from you, Eric.
Oh? Shannon? Gary? And I have none. Um, okay, number 13, closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota statute section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3C3 to consider a color offer on property within the city of Cold Spring, specifically parcels identified and identification numbers 48.29101.0025.